I call the order of the meeting of the council for Tuesday, July 16, 2019. Roll call.
Alder present, your honor.
We have a form and we will proceed. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Due to the republic for which it stands by nature, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our-
Now we're on to the implication, Alder from the fourth, where is?
Thank you. In honor of the 50th anniversary of the launching of the Apollo 11, I have a quote from President John Kennedy, the man who started that whole program. And it goes like this, "A man does what he must in spite of personal consequences, in spite of obstacles and dangers, and that is the basis of all human morality."
Approved minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alder from the third, second by Alder from the second, the seventh rather. Any corrections that need to be made? Seeing no requests, all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Minutes have been approved. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the eighth. Any changes you'd like to make? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Under the report of the mayor. So just a few things to note. Had the pleasure of attending the Open Streets this past weekend, which I think was a great success, and just wanted to thank Aurora Bay Care and all the sponsors and volunteers who played a role in making that happen. I did, on the urging of my children, attempt to participate in some of the Ninja Warrior activities, which were not so successful, but other than that, we had a great time. Also coming up, looking forward here, we do have the Shipyard Open House that I wanted to note, so that is tomorrow night from 3 to 8 at the Old Fort Square. To this point, I think we've had really robust public input, and so again encouraging folks to come out and provide their feedback based on what we will be voting on tonight. Also, not this coming weekend, but the following one, Tall Ships, are going to be in town, so nine tall ships, and we are one of 11 port cities in North America that have the benefit of these tall ships coming into town, so encouraging folks to go out and take in some of those activities. This, I think we had them a couple of years back, so just every few years, we have the pleasure of having the tall ships in town, so we're pretty glad to have them. Finally, just wanted to throw something out to you all as council members and to the public. I was invited to testify by Senator Baldwin to a subcommittee of the Senate Commerce Committee, and the title of the hearing is "America's Waterfunds Addressing Economic, Recreational, and Environmental Challenges." So as a coastal community, one that's experienced some flooding in recent days, they reached out to us and extended the invitation, so wanted you all to know that that was happening on July 23rd. So it's a tight timeline, just got the invitation, I think, last week. But if you all have priorities, things that you want me to include, as I said, this goes to the council members and members of the public, please feel free to reach out and let me know what you'd like me to tell the senators. With that, that concludes my report. Here onto announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to, and I know that obviously, I mean, crimes happen a lot in our community, but I just want to take a moment to commend Chief Smith, Acting Commander, John Lowes, as well as Community Police Officer Andrew Linds. They've been very informative about the unfortunate drive-by shooting that occurred near the border, my district and Alder Wery's district, and within six months, they, excuse me, within six minutes, they had those individuals apprehended. And it was very quick work by our police department, and I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to emphasize why community policing is so important. And while this is one of those unfortunate incidents that obviously found its way into the public, I shiver to think the number of incidents that our officers are very successful with, with, I guess, preventing. So, thank you, Chief Smith, to your new department.
Truly noted, thanks Alder. Alder from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with Alder Johnson, that was amazing police work, great response, and incredible, really. I also wanted to talk on this because my kids wouldn't let me go if I didn't. But every year, the Parks Department has their game day at Fisk Park and all the different parks around the city, Tom, and Goldberg one, so I just had to congratulate Goldberg on that.
Excellent. Congratulations, Goldberg. Alder from the seventh.
Thank you, your honor, just a couple of announcements. First of all, brought to you from On Broadway Inc., the Levitt Amp Music Series, it's every Tuesday, as we speak it's going on, it's from 5 to 8. Enjoy live, original music by National Acts in the Broadway District. The free concert series will take place every Tuesday at Light Memorial Park, which is my district, including on-site food trucks and placemaking activities, which I think is like, groovy and stuff, I don't know, I'm not sure what a placemaking activity is, but.
Check it out.
And Tuesdays from 6 to 7:30, the Selcom Children's Edible Garden in front of the Central Library extends the library's role in summer education and literacy. Drop in for an informal tour and ask questions about gardening. And then last but not least, just sort of a little, there we go. Summer music in the park, music, food trucks, Whitney Park. Thursdays through August 8th, 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., presented by Pops Tires. Come see Third Degree this Thursday, and then there's Amy Beeble and Vicky Basser Listening Party, huh? I said Listening Party? Jerry Volker and the Jolly Johnny, so a lot of activity stuff going on, there's some fun, some fun, free stuff to do. Thank you.
Good stuff. Thanks Alder. Any other announcements? Alder from the sixth.
Yes, I wanted to mention, I was at Pantry Park, the county had their employee picnic, and I was talking to the executive, Troy Starkeback, and I wanted to say, I want to congratulate Eric, our mayor, on the congenial work that you two are doing. Troy's very appreciative. That was one of the things. Another thing, I want to bring up, on Friday, they're talking about even decks over 105. And I did talk this morning on Route 2, maybe, to the manager, and say we don't close on hot days, but I would make a request, I don't know how we call this, I think that if it's true in the morning that they do believe it's going to be over 105, I believe maybe it should be closed in the afternoon, because I really am concerned about the employees, those kids sitting out there. I know they do look out for them, they give them water and different things, but somebody might be very susceptible to the heat, and I just think it would be more advantageous for the city just to close it down.
Appreciate that comment, Alder, we can certainly talk to Director Ditchit offline here and discuss some plans.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other announcements? With that, we're on to presentations. Laura Schly, the Public Arts Coordinator, will present the Sidewalk Poetry Program along with the selected poems and poets.
So I'm just going to tell you a little bit of background about this presentation tonight. A few months ago, the Green Bay Public Arts Commission received a proclamation from the mayor acknowledging April as National Poetry Month in Green Bay. And to celebrate this occasion, the Public Arts Commission released a contest, basically, requesting poem submissions for our Sidewalk Poetry Program. This project is similar to other programs that are happening in Appleton and St. Paul, Minnesota, where original poems are submitted and then they're eventually made into concrete stamps that are imprinted into sidewalks around the city that are already in need of repair or replacement around the city. So during the month of April, we actually received over 40 original submissions from Green Bay residents, both young and young at heart. It was hard work, but eventually we narrowed it down to five poems, and several of these poets are able to join me this evening to share their poem and explain a little bit about the inspiration behind it. So I'm going to kick things off, unfortunately, two poets weren't able to join us, so I'll kick things off with our first poem here. It is called "Weight of the World" by Cujo Majak. "The weight of the world rests upon the tree, but still she stands, empowering those around her, with breath exhaled, yet however mighty her force of will, she still must inhale." He didn't give me a description behind it, but I'm sure it's very deep and meaningful. And then also, I have "Midnight Sailor" by Doris Bezo. Midnight sailor, stars have fallen to earth, their light quivers on indigo waves. He raises white sails, sets an even course down the silver path of the moon. When I asked Doris about the meaning behind this poem, she said that she was sitting by the lake one night, and the stars were shining so bright and reflecting on the water that it looked like there was another sun, and the moon made this path down the lake, and she just dreamed, what would it be like to sail down the lake? She said it was a very beautiful night. So that's the poem. I will now invite all of our other poets up here. Shelley, you go first.
Thank you, my name is Shelley Paul. You might say home is where you weigh your head. Home for me is not wanting to be anywhere instead. So my poem, though short and sweet, it's about finding a sense of ownership in your own community, and wanted something that would resonate with everyone who lives here and joins us in our community. It's about actively choosing where you want to settle down. For me, it was college, UW-Green Bay, that brought me here many, many years ago, and from there, I kind of put down my roots, I found my fit, and that's the sentiment I wanted to share through my poem today. Thank you.
Looking at a clock, if you look close to a clock, it looks like a person with a mustache.
All right, well, mine's part of a song, so unfortunately for you, you're posting a whole thing, so. My poem is, submitted was the verse of the song, first verse, actually, and the song is called "The Resolution." It's about looking for a way forward after being forced, like many other people, I would have through hikes, and that's what my answer is, and that's excellent stuff. Become another creature amongst the seasons change. Behold into the spring and the solitude of the rage. Plagued for struggle, what I finally understand, life somehow so simple, so undecided and grand. For resolution I seek if it can be found. Has to be somewhere near, the wilderness abound. Just let me carry on, let this path never end. Just give me time to find the meaning of this. Every step closer to a prison that awaits, where society approves and everyone has been tamed. So I pull my straps tighter, grip my poles just so. Keep my wits about me, cherish the miles left to go. Resolution I seek if it can be found. Has to be somewhere near, the wilderness abound. Just let me carry on, let this path never end. Just give me time to find the meaning of this. Cause when it's all over, life still lies away. I'll stand resolute the decisions I have.
Thank you, guys, for sharing your work. Just wanted to kind of update you on the progress now. Stamps are currently being fabricated and should arrive later this month, and we've been working with the Parks Department on establishing locations to install them around the city, hopefully later this summer. This is a new and exciting step for Green Bay to embrace the literary arts and include poetry in our everyday lives, and I just want to thank this year's poets for truly making a mark in our community. Thank you. (Applause) I'll give you a minute to give the vote of the mayor, just really quickly, and I'll consent before she's entitled to view. Where do you want it? Yeah?
Oh.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, one, two, three, smile. One more, one, two, three. Oops, sorry. One, two, three, smile, and one more, and one final. Okay, awesome.
Yes, thanks to you all for making our community and having the confidence to display, I really appreciate that. Now we are on to appointments. Motion. Second. Motion by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the fifth, to confirm the appointment of Senator Rank to the Broadway Business District and Jamie Wall to the Water Commission. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, item has been approved. Public hearings, we're now on to public hearings, and we have six items for public hearings. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to any of these items? Anyone here who would like to speak to these items? Is there anyone here who would like to speak to these items? Clerk, please let the record reflect that no one appeared to speak to these items. We're on to ordinance, a second reading for adoption.
Give me under suspension on rules, take up items one through three with a roll call vote.
To suspend. Motion made by Alder from the first, second by Alder from the seventh, to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. I'll entertain a motion to adopt items K1 through K3. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the tenth, to adopt items K1 through K3. Motion passes 11 to 1, few technical difficulties here, Mike wants me to assure you all that it is not civic clerk related. Item L, report of the Redevelopment Authority, July 9, 2019. What are your wishes regarding this report? Motion to approve. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the first, to approve Report L, which is the report of the Redevelopment Authority from a meeting on July 9, 2019. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Any others? Item three will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, report has been approved, with the exception of item three. What are your wishes regarding- Second. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the first, to approve. Item was pulled by Alder from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Vonck, appreciate the time you took this afternoon to answer several of my questions, I knew there was one more and this was it. So I apologize if we're airing this out in public, something I could have just answered very clearly, but the, when we talk about the extension of a TID by an additional year that can be used for affordable housing projects, could you just explain to me how, if at all, the closing of these TIDs affect that process? And does that, does that require you to come back to council if we want to extend that for an additional year?
Sure, so the resolutions before you tonight authorize the RDA to basically perform the activities, to do what's mentioned here. Traditionally, by state statute, the planning commission handles tax increment districts. Here, though, in the city, the RDA has historically been designated that entity, just because they are the ones also involved in making the development agreements. And so we go through and then authorized by resolution, the RDA could perform these activities. What will happen then is staff will work on preparing recommendations based on this. With that, these recommendations then will be presented to the Joint Review Board, who then will pass them on to the city. The Redevelopment Authority will hold a public hearing, vote on these, or make a recommendation to city council, and then city council will vote on these before they go back to the JRV for final adoption. These will happen this summer. As far as the extension for the affordable housing, this is a part of the state legislation. It's not used very often, but basically allows a municipality, once all the project costs for a TID have been paid off, either they're gone, developers' agreements, infrastructure, once those have all been closed out, there's no additional expenses, you're allowed to keep that tax increment district open one more year, collect that increment, and put it into a fund that is designated for affordable housing. So what we would like to do, or recommending, is some of the tax increment districts that are scheduled to close, we would like to put a sunset date on for closing those, having them open one more year for affordable housing, and then be fully terminated. In terms of the impacts, the ones that we're looking at closing that would do this, would be District 7, District 8, and District 12. Even with adding that additional year for affordable housing, we're looking at a process that would either end 2020, affordable housing in 2021, and then full closure in 2022, or a year out. Director Allen Beckner and I are just kind of going through the numbers to see where they all match up. With that, all of these tax increment districts will end before their mandatory closure time. So, you know, even with that extra year in there for affordable housing, they're still going to then, the new taxes, incremental taxes, come back to the taxing jurisdictions before their mandatory term date.
So does, does approval of this, this item tonight authorize you to extend that TID by one additional year, or these three TIDs by one additional year?
It authorizes us to prepare a plan to bring back to you for final authorization.
Understood, thank, thank you for the clarification. Any other requests to speak? Yes? Alder from the fourth.
Thank you, Dr. Vonck, how much money are we talking about, by extending those three TIDs for one year?
Based on our current projections, based on the increment of the time that they would be closed, so whether that's the end of calendar year 2019, or the end of calendar year 22, if some additional projects come on, running a year of increment could get us somewhere around one and a half to $2 million into that fund.
And if these TIDs weren't extended for one year, that'd be one and a half, $2 million going towards the levy?
Correct, so in terms of the increment then, well, I take that back, going towards the levy of the taxing jurisdictions. So we would get our share of that, so those numbers are based on the full tax rate, so that's our tax rate, the county tax rate, the school district tax rate, and the technical college tax rate, which is about 22.32. Okay.
22.38.
23.38, it's gone up a little bit. So of that, that increment goes back to the taxing jurisdictions, so we would only receive 900-
916 or 36.5.
So just under $1 million, we would be missing, or gone, or being used for other things that we could have been using for our levy?
For one year, and part of the way we looked at it is, you know, right now, we do, we bond for neighborhood enhancement, and the Neighborhood Enhancement Program, you know, funds a lot of affordable housing projects in our community. If we could find a way to defer, or delay, or reduce the amount of bonding we do for that, and use the tax increment from these districts to help, you know, capitalize that fund, we felt that would be a trade-off in terms of this increment coming in, capitalize it, and we wouldn't have to be paying the debt service.
So instead of bonding for $900,000, we'd be using this money?
Yeah, I mean, it would be up to council to approve some parameters in terms of what this affordable housing fund would cover. You know, like we do now, council approves the Neighborhood Enhancement Program, and generally some categories for allocations, and while it's the RDA administrate, most likely we'd do the same with a housing fund and saying, look, it's going to be used, and it may be split for these different programs, that would be authorized by this council on how that money would be spent.
If we went just for housing, then we could put, there's many lots, some in my district that have been empty for quite a bit of time, so we could put up housing that would then be taxed and bring more revenue into our city.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other requests to speak? Seeing no other requests, all in favor of the motion to approve item three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, item has been approved. Item M, reported the Improvement in Services Committee, July 10, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the first, second by Alder from the seventh, to approve Report M, which is reported by Improvement in Services Committee from a meeting on July 10, 2019. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Any other items? Item three will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, report has been approved, with the exception of item three. What are your wishes regarding item three?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the sixth. Item was pulled by Alder from the ninth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, I just think that the original language that was on this, we worked with the law department to clean up that language a little bit, there's a copy of that that was placed on each alder's setting, so I guess we would just ask that, tonight, that we approve the Safe Park Initiative, that would be the request, and I think that would be the motion, but give staff the ability, I guess, to kind of work with the language that's around there. I think, just the law department has just, they've captured the essence of the program, they just dusted it up to make it a little bit cleaner and easier to understand, so. And with that, I, I think there, I mean, there is somebody here, maybe I should open the floor.
Second. Motion made by Alder from the ninth, second by Alder from the third, over to the floor, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, the floor's open. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Don Melley, 641 North Huron Street, Puyott, Wisconsin, president of Rock County Tavern League. Just want to thank Alder Johnson and Puyott here and everybody that helped participate to make this what it is right now. If you have any questions- Pudinier, any questions? If anybody has any.
Does this thing work when I push? Sometimes. Sometimes.
Alder from the 4th.
Thank you. And obviously, I don't think there's anyone that's not interested in reducing the amount of intoxicated drivers on our streets. We have the taxi cab program, and it's administered by the Tavern League. And where do the funds come from for that?
For the Safe Ride program?
Yes.
That is through matching funds. We raise money, and it's price matched by the Department of Transportation. And the Department of Transportation gets that from non-taxpaying dollars. It's actually $78 out of every OWY conviction, goes towards helping the Safe Ride program throughout the state of Wisconsin. Last year, there is 91,194 safe rides in the state, so that's 250 drunk drivers off the road each day. In Brown County, it's got the new results in, we're at 4,062. That tripled in size over the last two years, so things are trending in the right direction. I think this is an effective tool to kind of keep things going to reducing drunk driving around the state.
Okay. They've dealt away with the problems they had before, where it was taverns were giving out free rides to friends, coworkers, things like that. I mean, is that monitored, or how's that...
Strongly monitored by myself, my treasurer, and I'm the Safe Ride Coordinator in the county as well. I also worked to integrate Lyft into the Safe Ride program, that can be used throughout the state now, and that does a much better job of looking digitally to see exactly how many rides people have used per week, making sure it wasn't being used inappropriately, basically, a lot easier to monitor.
Have we found anything like that happening?
No. No, not in a long time.
So out of the 4,000 that we've had in the last year, roughly, it was a one-time per person?
Yeah. Well, it can be used up to two times per week, per person. We don't want them to use it more than twice per week, because we don't want people to overutilize it. That's just a rule that we have in county. It differentiates by county, but we try to monitor things to make sure it's being used responsibly.
Are we going to have something like that with the parking restriction?
Correct. So I'm working with the City of Green Bay Police Department right now, and we're going to have those numbered, and we're going to give out certain numbers to different bars, and the Parking Division's going to circle back with me and monitor how many is being used. A good advantage also is if there's a tavern that has like 14 of these or something outside after a night, then we can call a tavern and say, hey, we think people are being over-served at your establishment, and then we'll watch that a little more closely.
And why can't all taverns in Brown County? I mean, we're trying to reduce intoxicated driving, why can't all taverns be part of this?
I think for right now, it's good that we handle this with Brown County Tavern League taverns. We're a very responsible group of people that I can maintain and coordinate with, and if we have every single tavern using it, it's going to be hard for me to reach out, to be using it appropriately, and I wouldn't be able to follow up with that as effectively.
And another follow-up question I have. So the Tavern League has been all for safe rides, they're all for this safe parking. What else has the Tavern League done to reduce over-serving in their establishments and the amount of intoxicated drivers? And what have they done legislation-wise to try and increase penalties and things like that for intoxicated drivers?
That's a little bit out of my wheelhouse, I'm just Brown County, but I also am part of the Brown County Traffic Safety Commission, and I help oversee the Place of Last Drink Initiative, that's been happening for the past year and a half, which monitors where people were drinking last, whether it be at a house or home, if used or other, and that's helped quarterly. I also am part of the Brown County Alcohol Drug Coalition for Change. So I sit in with them and talk about different legislations in municipal level, and things that we're working on to help reduce drunk driving around the area.
So this isn't just a way of rewarding people that go out and drink too much. There actually is some, not necessarily science, but there's some work going on behind the scenes to try and, I guess, better educate taverns so they're not over-serving?
Taverns and patrons alike. So what I'm doing is working with the Parking Division. This is more of a reactive approach. If somebody made the wrong choice and say, hey, I don't want to get behind the wheel, this isn't necessarily rewarding that. It's basically helping people that didn't have a choice, people that are driving on the roads, and don't have to face that person now that they decided not to drink and drive for fear of a parking ticket. I'm working with the City Parks Department, or Parking Division, on making an interactive map of places you can park around the city, because there are a lot of places to park, but we have to educate taverns and patrons alike that you can park places now to worry about getting a parking ticket overnight and be able to sell very responsibly.
And I guess finally, when you tell me that there are allowed two cab rides a week, to me, I guess, if I was getting intoxicated to a point where I was getting two cab rides a week, do you find that troublesome?
Depends on what happens, if somebody goes out to certain establishments, if they have a pool night, or if they have Dart League, or if they do other things around the area. Not necessarily, and if it's more than that, then, I mean, we have to raise so much money to price match this with the Department of Transportation, that we have to fund it on our end. So we ask people, you know, be responsible, give designated driver, give a cab in, or a Lyft ride, or an Uber into your favorite establishment, so you can practice, you know, driving responsibly.
Well, I guess my point is, you're looking at this parking issue to try and see if there is problem establishments, and then maybe they could tighten things up. And we certainly don't want to make people afraid to ask for a ride, or for a parking permit, but you don't see an issue with an individual that's becoming intoxicated to the point that twice a week they need to take a cab ride home?
Me not personally, this isn't necessarily to watch over taverns, this is mostly for people that, you know, hey, I made a mistake, I don't want to drive my vehicle home, I want you to leave on the street overnight and not have to risk getting a parking ticket, and to be able to come back now.
I guess you're missing my point, or maybe I'm not understanding your answer.
No, I don't think so.
Because I'm asking you to think that's a problem, that an establishment is over-serving a person to the point where they need a ride home twice a week?
Plenty of order, is that really the agenda we're talking about? Are we not talking about the same... I mean, I've been on that other committee, so I know it's a whole separate, there's a lot more to it, Alder, but I just wanted to get it as clear, but...
Oh, point taken. I apologize. Thank you.
Alder from the 7th.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to piggyback on a question that Alder Galvin stole from me. The, this is just a pilot program, correct? So that, I mean, we're working with the Tavern League to get it going, and if it works out, then it can be extended to other taverns, even if they're not in the league, correct?
That's correct.
Any other speakers? Motion to close the floor? Thank you, Mr. Melley. Motion made by Alder from the 9th, second by Alder from the 10th to close the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Seeing no other requests to speak, all in favor, Mayor. I guess Alder from the 9th.
I just want to thank Don, as well as, I guess through this process, we had met with the PD, we had met with the Parking Division, the Brown County Tavern League. You know, we kind of thoroughly vetted this and fleshed out a number of different scenarios, making sure that we weren't rewarding certain behaviors, but creating a responsible option for those folks who chose not to get behind the wheel, keeping overall public safety first in mind. And that includes people who weren't out drinking that night. And I think it's also to point out that this program is, I believe, unique to the state, one of only a handful of these exists in the country. And one of the reasons that it is unique is because the City of Green Bay currently maintains overnight parking restrictions. Other cities do not have that, and so that is why this program is something that is being proposed. And the very, I guess, core of this particular program is that 3 to 5 period. And so that's all we're looking to waive. So when you look at things like parking in meters, parking in two-hour stalls, other areas that create problems, if individuals park in those areas, and that meter kicks in at 8:00 a.m., they're still, you know, subject to a parking citation. So the only thing that this is doing is waiving that 3 to 5 a.m. parking restriction in areas where parking is allowed. So I just kind of wanted to point that out, because that was a question that had been brought up to me frequently. I obviously urge your support for this particular program, because again, it's not the end-all, be-all, it is not a solution, but I think anytime that we can give people an opportunity to make an easy decision, I think we ought to do that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder from the 10th?
Thank you, Don. I'd like to commend Don, and Alder Johnson, and Alder Dorf, Alder Leary as well, who worked on this several years back. I was involved a little bit, and some of the other Alders have been too, so I think it's a very big concern for many of us, but I'm thankful that we have some leadership now, and that we're moving forward with it, and thanks to all who are involved.
Alder from the 4th.
Yeah, I just have one more question. I noticed that we have some wording about parking in meter or downtown parking restricted areas. And I don't know for every tavern in Green Bay, but there's also areas that are restricted by time. And would that hold true for those areas also? Yes? All right, thank you.
All right. So given the debate ground, where do you use the board? Motion passes 12-0. Alder, item reported by Protection Policy Committee, June 24, July 8, July 9, and July 12, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alder from the 7th, second by Alder from the 5th, to approve Report N, which is the report of Protection Policy Committee from meetings on June 24, July 8, July 9, and July 12, 2019. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
17. 11.
Any other items? Item 17 and 11 will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item 17 and 11. What are your wishes regarding item 17?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the 7th, second by Alder from the 8th to approve item 17. Item was pulled by Alder from the 9th.
11, 17.
11, 17.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this item, I want to really thank the residents of that area for putting their efforts and concern really out there. They're the ones who brought this forward, you know, on just the voice piece, and I want to thank the police, you know, they met with the neighborhood, they met with a lot of individuals, they did by email, by phone, in person, they did a really great job pulling together the data, and then having some great ideas that came out at committee. For Mason DeChano, you know, a pretty dense housing area along western Avenue, and maybe someday we need to look at, you know, breaking that down a little bit, but we just need to stay vigilant on holding property owners accountable, you know, with the payment plans, you know, nuisance properties, things of that nature. There's a lot of good people over there who just do pretty bad apples, and as we saw with the data, it's what happened recently in this last year, but really some aberrations, I think, not indicative of what always happens over there. So I, instead of, I don't know if you just read the report, it looks like we're not doing anything with this, so I'd like to make the motion just to strike the receive and place on file, and at the very end to put, to approve the measures suggested at committee by the Police Department. And there were some great ideas that we can serve proactively in a moment, so, thank you.
Seeing no other requests to speak, all in favor of the motion to approve the measures recommended by the police, motion made by Alder from the 8th, second by Alder from the 10th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, item has been approved. We're on item 11, Alder from the 9th.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the 7th, second by Alder from the 1st.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for legal. As I'm looking at item number 4C, it's one of the following conditions that exist, the applicant held a city-issued regular license of the same type during the expired licensing year and did not timely submit a renewal application as a result of excusable neglect on the part of the applicant. If I'm not mistaken, excusable neglect is a legal term. Could you just kind of explain what qualifies as excusable neglect?
Yes. Legal, or excusable neglect is a legal term. It's used by courts in determining whether or not certain actions or inactions by either an attorney, or a plaintiff, or defendant, or person, are something that would merit excusing of the rules. And so the things that have ultimately been, have been things that were qualified for excusable neglect. So one of the most recent cases that I've seen happen is a person asked for an extension of time to submit a witness list or an expert list, and they claimed excusable neglect because they had been going through cancer treatments. The court concluded that, yes, going through cancer treatments, it's used it the first probably two or three months of the original, not the nine months that it took, because by then they shouldn't have been able to go and talk to somebody, or get somebody else to, or at least tell them more, what's going on. So excusable neglect is a standard that allows people in instances where there is something really disrespected, and they're able to do it, to, it gives them an ability to weigh the strict compliance, but it also has that, it's kind of a weighing what is really appropriate, of what was appropriate in light versus what was just the work during the treatment.
Thank you for that clarification, and I guess, if I'm not mistaken, state statute does require us to have a local ordinance that defines how provisional licenses are issued, is that correct?
What state statute requires is that we issue provisional licenses. It says that we may adopt the ordinance that governs how we do that.
We may adopt, and so this is before us today, because we're opting to exercise the may.
Correct.
Okay, so in instances of inexcusable neglect, I don't know if that's a real legal term, but somebody says, oops, I didn't do what I was supposed to do. Is that, does that qualify under this? And do we see any dangerous precedents that might be created from having, I guess, an ordinance that would allow that? I'm just trying to figure out, like, if there's not a penalty to get something done on time, is that a bad thing? It's really, it really is genuinely a question.
So there are a couple things that we are trying to do. As you guys are aware, we're trying to redo Chapter 33 as a whole, and when we do that, we're going to be building in a more realistic timeframe for people to actually get their licenses reviewed, and also for staff to be able to respond to those. With that, the intent would be that once people, if they're able to meet the timeframe, you know, give them four months to get it completed, then they're just doing it under the normal process. We're doing half of that deadline, they're asking for a rush, so we're doing the associated with it. This would be allowing the circumstances where they didn't even meet that rush period. Now, as far as us choosing to, an excusable neglect standard, I think this is appropriate, because it is a standard that even the courts have adopted. It is something that we can look to for judicial guidance on the types of instances where they have ruled that it's appropriate versus where it's just neglect. And so I don't think that we're creating any kind of new standards for this, we're working off something that is workable, even in a judicial context where it feels highly likely. And we aren't creating anything where we are setting the city up for the residents up a failure, because we are, we are looking to amend all traffic rules, this whole, to kind of address the little issues that we're having.
Okay, thanks again, Vanessa, for that clarity. I do support this, I just wanted some clarification on some of those things. I think, if I'm not mistaken, there were about 20 establishments in the city this year, roughly, for a variety of reasons, that hadn't met that deadline. It's my understanding that year over year, there tends to be a less, this year was maybe a few more than what we have been accustomed, but I also understand that staff did a very good job of reaching out to a number of those establishments proactively without having to, and I do want to thank staff for doing that, because that 20 could have easily been 40, had they not taken those steps. And so in addition to, I mean, what we're taking up here, obviously, which is ordinance, and it's something that will be codified, I want to continue to encourage our staff to do that proactive outreach, because I think that's the level of customer service that we ought to provide, and then I think our citizens expect, and again, I just, I want to commend the staff for doing just that. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Seeing no other requests to speak, Alder from the 7th.
Just quickly, I also want to thank staff. We worked, a couple weeks ago, trying, bending over backwards, trying to work out some of these issues with late renewals, and there was nothing we could do because we had no ordinance. This will empower us to be able to do our job better, and it does have, it is well-written, the staff has done a great job putting this together, and I really appreciate that. And I think it does safeguard us from enabling bad businesses behaving badly, but there are definitely instances where there's an oops for any number of reasons, and we should be able to take that into account and be able to act accordingly, which before we couldn't, now we can, so, thank you.
Thanks for all those meetings, Alder. Seeing no other... Seeing no other requests to speak, all in favor of the motion to approve item eleven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Yes, have it. Item has been approved. Item O, reported by Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Same.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first, to approve report O, which is the report of Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Any names for which you'd like to be recorded as abstaining?
Mr. Mayor.
Alder from the ninth.
Thank you. Two names, Tony, Casey, and Danielle Wyatt, they both report directly to me.
Any other names? Alder from the second.
Tina Parkus, relation.
Alder from the ninth, can you repeat? The names?
Tony, Casey, and Danielle Wyatt.
Okay, we have those extensions recorded. Any names under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. Report has been approved, noting the extensions. P, reported by Plan Commission, July eighth, twenty nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fourth, to approve report P, which is the report of Plan Commission, meeting on July eighth, twenty nineteen. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
One.
Any other items? Item P will be handled separately. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. Report has been approved, with the exception of item one.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the tenth. Alder from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to be noted as abstaining from the vote on committed to an appointment.
Very good. Extension as noted. Any other requests to speak? Seeing no other requests to speak, all in favor of the motion to approve item one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. Item has been approved. Q, reported by Finance Committee.
I wasn't thinking, I voted aye, so, I'd say, but if the cameras are on me, I'd vote a yes.
Your extension has still been noted.
I'm an ethical guy. I don't know, the guy that camera man.
We got it. MQ, reported by Finance Committee, June eighteenth.
Motion to approve.
And July ninth. Motion to approve made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the sixth, to approve report Q, which is the report of the Finance Committee, meeting on June eighteenth and July ninth. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. Report has been approved. R, reported by Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the eighth, to approve report R, which is the report of the Park Committee, meeting on July tenth, twenty nineteen. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. Report has been approved. S, reported Personnel Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first, to approve report S, which is the report of Personnel Committee, meeting on July ninth, twenty nineteen. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
Number two.
Item two. Any other items? Item two will be handled separately. Hearing no others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. Report has been approved, with the exception of items two, or your wishes regarding item two.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the tenth. Item was pulled by Alder from the fourth. You have it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd actually like to make an amendment to this. But the amendment would be, would be to add the word religion following the word creed in both section one-one-one D and one-one-one two. Motion made by Alder from the fourth, seconded by Alder from the twelfth, to amend the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Item has been amended. Any other requests to speak? Seeing no other requests to speak, all in favor of the motion, as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. Item has been approved. T, reported by Traffic, Bicycle, and Pedestrian Information.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fifth, to approve report T, which is the report of Traffic, Bicycle, and Pedestrian Information, meeting on June seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
Three.
Item three will be handled separately. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. Report has been approved, with the exception of item three. What do you wish is regarding item three?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the sixth. Item was pulled by Alder from the third.
Thanks, Mayor. I was approached by a constituent lady that lives on the corner of Juniper and Laura, I believe.
She has a... Is that Blama?
No. That's where you were parked. So, I was approached by a constituent lady, lives on the corner of Juniper and Laura. Right now, you have yield signs going east and west on Juniper, no signs on Laura Street. When I visited this lady in June, she has a very severe handicap son that she's worried about with traffic, which I thought was very important, and I brought it towards the, well, the Traffic Commissioner. But anyway, she was wondering with just basically security, peace of mind, and just living secure in her own neighborhood, she asked me if we, if it's possible to change the signs to stop. So, I said, well, I'll talk to her, talk to her Traffic Commissioner, Dave Hanson, which I did. And Dave actually recommended to have a four-way stop, or change the signs on Laura Street. But I said, well, why don't we just take baby steps and just have a stop sign on Juniper, where there's yield signs right now? And he said, that's a good idea. That's what told me over the phone. Okay? I did not go to the meeting, it's received and placed on file. I called up Dave. Dave stated that there's no crash history, that that's basically the gist. I'm like, okay, thank you. It's a recommendation. So, what I'd like to do is make a motion with the, I mean, I did talk to other neighbors, and they don't have a problem with it. What I'd like to do is make a motion to change the yield signs to stop signs. And the reason is, is that if there is a constituent, and the person could be living in any of the twelve districts with a, an issue that she has, I believe it'd be basically a very inexpensive, quick fix that she can live in the neighborhood and feel safe. And, I mean, the signs are already made. We have the signs. And we do have labor that works during the week. So, basically, it's not going to be an expensive issue to change two signs. So, that is my request, and that is my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion made by Alder from the third, seconded by Alder from the ninth, to change the two-way yield condition on Juniper Drive at Laura Street to a two-way stop condition. Any further comments?
I have, if I can continue.
Alder from the third.
You know, I've, I've heard the arguments where, well, they don't stop for yield signs, why would they stop for stop signs? Well, matter of fact, I really don't stop for yield signs. But you know what? I do stop for stop signs. So, I'm one person in the whole wide world that actually looks at a stop sign compared to a yield sign. And with law enforcement background that I have, I just don't have the confidence in yield signs, especially the predicament that is on Laura and Juniper. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder from the first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I did serve on the Traffic Commission for two years, and there, there's a lot that goes into making these decisions, and there are many, many requests that come to Traffic to put up stop signs. We would have a lot more stop signs around our city if every one of those requests were approved. I believe the appropriate place for this is not to vote on this tonight, but to send this back to committee, because it sounds like there was a mixed message sent when Alder, you know, Alder from the third spoke with the chief traffic engineer. It sounded like things were going to be fine, and he didn't go to the meeting. I don't blame him. There's lots of meetings, but it didn't turn out that way. So, I, my motion would be to send this back to committee, which I think, so that super, this super seems, a motion that's on the floor, if I could just second.
Motion made by Alder from the first, seconded by Alder from the seventh, to refer item three back to committee. Any further discussion? Alder from the seventh.
Yes, I was going to also make that recommendation because it sounds like the issue wasn't addressed at all, and that maybe there might be other ways to address it. And I know there are neighborhoods that have signage of, depending from the handicap, what the handicap is, warning people of a handicap child. So, whether, maybe...
Point of, point of order, that is not a correct statement. Have a mic, please, Mayor. According to Dave Hanson, we have an ordinance that we, that the city does not provide that anymore. That's what I was told by our Traffic Commissioner.
Director, bring it in.
That's correct.
Alder from the seventh.
Okay. Well, then, it still sounds, well, I guess I still support referral in that it sounds like they looked at traffic history when it was literally a traffic history issue. Perhaps, I don't know. I thought there might be other possibilities here. I wasn't aware that that had changed.
Why, why before you were...
Why did we...
It was just, it was one of the issues with Dave Hanson, we pass it, we don't have it anymore. It was years ago.
Alder from the seventh has a question.
Sorry, can I explain it to you?
Yep. Alder from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we can resolve this here tonight. I'm opposed to referring it back. This is such a, a small item in the scheme of things, and I guarantee you it'll come right back with the same recommendation. So, nobody, we all, this, nobody knows your, your district's neighborhood better than the older person, honestly. And if such a small fix like this can be addressed something, what are we doing? So, I agree with just a vote no one, just fix it tonight. Thanks.
Alder from the eleventh.
Not for a referral on this, Mayor. I think we should vote on it tonight and get it resolved. But I think that, you know, the request had been put forward, and it sounded like Mr. Hanson didn't get back to Mr. Nicholson, or Mr. Nicholson didn't get back to Mr. Hanson. But I think the gist is there that they'd like to put the sign up. I think let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder from the ninth.
I'm going to vote against referral as well, mostly because I think, again, it is a recommendation that comes from the committee, and if we're going to send it back, to come back with another recommendation, it just seems like a little bit of a redundant process.
Alder from the tenth.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm also against referral. I went all with Alder Nicholson, and did, did look at that intersection, and I believe that he does have an issue that needs to be resolved, so I'm against referral as well.
Alder from the third.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to support referral. It's an easy fix, it's not a major issue here. We're not talking about thousands of dollars. Just asking for the courtesy of the other aldermen in the City of Green Bay to grant two stop signs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, bend his. All right. No additional speakers. We're going to go to roll call here. We're going to use the board, although we can't display it. We'll use the board on this motion to refer. Motion fails. Eighty-four. The motion on the floor is to change the two-way yield condition on Juniper Drive at Laura Street to a two-way stop condition. Motion was made by Alder from the third, seconded by Alder from the ninth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Yes, have it. Item has been approved. U, reported by Sustainability Commission, June twelve, twenty nineteen. What do you wish is regarding this report?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, taken by Alder from the sixth, to approve report U, which is the report of Sustainability Commission, meeting on June twelve, twenty nineteen. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Yes, have it. Reported by Tax Incremental District's Joint Review Committee, June twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. What do you wish is regarding this report? Motion made by Alder from the first, seconded by Alder from the seventh, to approve report B, which is the report of the Tax Incremental District Joint Review Committee, meeting on June twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Report has been approved. Received and placed on file.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fifth, is received and placed on file with the link permanent report in this court report for June twenty-nineteen. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. Report's been received and placed on file. Resolutions.
You may adjutant suspension of the rules about resolutions one through twenty-eight together with the suspend.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh.
Second.
Seconded by Alder from the eighth. To suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Yes, have it. The rules are suspended. Motion to be resolved. Motion made by Alder from the seventh. Seconded by Alder from the eighth, to doubt resolutions one through twenty-eight. Please use the board.
Mayor, I got a quick question, please.
Alder from the third.
Can I just, can you take this off so I can just read? I believe it's eleven. We're on resolutions, correct?
Correct.
Can you take that off, please?
Take one off, Alder.
All right, whoever did that, thank you.
Could you create meetings for the board?
Yeah, okay. Alder, you have four.
Could someone give us the gist of number eleven, please?
Director.
Sure. So, this is, this bonding is a tip-supported bond to continue development of the Shipyard redevelopment project. This goes back to the ten million we authorized. We've tried to be fiscally responsible, and instead of taking all ten million at once, it's just ridiculous.
Thank you.
Sure.
Why, no, why would it be, like, number eleven, why would it be written up with the project name in the resolution? It just seems deceiving, that's all. I mean, when you read it in the public, does it, or...
We printed it the way our bond council had to put the resolution together. If that's your request, you could put more information in there to explain it more in our terms of this is going to be a tip for the Shipyard project, and then add that additional information to it in the future resolutions.
Could you do that? Because, I mean, I know the public, I know, well, right off the bat, I could name at least two individuals that will read it and live in District Three that's going to say, what's this all about? Is there a way you can put the project in?
Yes.
So, they know it's towards the Shipyard project? Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mayor. That's all I have. Thank you. They came up, and one let me quit. They came up, and they let me cook. Oh! Die! Never mind. Those passed 11 to one. Ordinance is first reading. I entertain motion to advance item one to a second and final reading. To advance. Motion made by Alder from the tenth. Second by Alder from the seventh, to advance. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and we know that item has been advanced to the final reading. Z, referral petitions and communications. Alder from the sixth.
Yes, this is for the park board. Due to safety concerns, brought to my attention, I'm requesting that A. B. Chayer is securing officers slash officers during hours or operations with costs coming from A. B. Chayer's profit slash account.
Thank you, Alder. Alder from the twelve.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two, both the parks, to direct staff to study and prepare a report on the number of parks, including city, county, school, and O'Nida Home throughout the 12th District, with the purpose of possibly locating property where the city can develop a new park. And again, also for parks for consideration with possible action to relocate the annual county carnival effective 2020 to other city parks, possibly Covert Park.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the fourth.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for the Sustainability Commission. I was approached by a young man in college who's studying environmental issues, and he'd like them to investigate the feasibility of installing solar panels on the various closed landfills within our city.
Thank you, Alder. Any other communications? Alder from the tenth.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have several. This is to the Parking Utility, to study and report out on the feasibility of utilizing the even odd residential address or a parking scenario, as is done in Milwaukee, in order to relieve the parking problems at residences with limited parking spaces. This is for INS as well, to look at placing a street light on the eastern side of Fellows Avenue, just north of Shawo Avenue. The next door, the traffic bicycle and pedestrian. One is to look at placing the 25 mile an hour signs on Eastbound and Westbound Bond Street between Military Avenue on the west and Fitzville Street on the east. And the last one is to look at placing signs that read "State Law Yield to Pedestrian and Crosswalk" on the West Side Trail at Military Avenue and at Shawo Avenue.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have to lean on staff to provide some clarity on this, but to consider forgiveness of the Broadway loan made to Cup of Joy, Institute for Redevelopment. Is that Broadway revolving loan fund?
Any other communications? Clerk, do you have any late communications?
Speaking now.
I entertain a motion to refer all petitions and communications. Motion was made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the first, to refer all petitions and communications to the proper authority. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, all petitions and communications have been referred. Admon.
Motion to adjourn.
Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the third, adjourn. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, adjourn.